July 15th. If I could please have a moment of silence followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Madam Secretary, could I please have a roll call?
Mia McCoy.
Here.
Deara Robinson.
Here.
Justin Queenen.
Here.
Emily Colson.
Here.
Jasmine Griffin.
Here.
Rashad Bates.
Here.
Rebecca Smith.
Here. Is there a motion to approve the minutes from our previous meeting?
Sub move.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Minutes are approved. We had an executive session this evening about personnel. Vice President Bates, do we have any announcements this evening?
Yes, we have two. Join Montgomery County Recovery Community Center for an uplifting evening in Elmwood Park. This is going to be on Wednesday, July 30th, from 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM. And this is presented by the Montgomery County Recovery Community Center, championing recovery, connection, community support throughout Montgomery County. The highlights include a drum circle, hot dogs and hamburgers, and outdoor activities. And the second one... is Sunday, July 20th, from 6:00 to 10:00 PM. There's a smoking whiskey at Von C. And this is funded by the... Reuniting Families Bu... Reuniting Families, and that's all.
Counsel, any other announcements? Next up, we'll have response to questions from our previous council meeting. Mr. Leitner.
Thank you, Madam President. So, we have a few here. Ms. Gibson, at the last council meeting, we want to thank her for bringing that matter to our attention. As you all remember, there was a search warrant served and executed, and we do understand this situation can feel a little intrusive, but we know Chief Angelucci had spoke with Ms. Gibson right after the meeting to ensure her that the proper procedures will be followed and were followed. We did follow up appropriately with her, and if there were any undue damages, we were looking to take action that was necessary to make everything whole with her. We have not heard anything back yet from Ms. Gibson, so it looks like everything was taken care of. We also had Mr. Johns had came in and spoke with us about Derrick Johns. Yep. He spoke with us about the dedication of the youth and providing update on Family Day. And we do agree with you that community and parent involvement is crucial. The municipality remains committed to working on the community with you guys as leaders and other organizations to really invest in the families. We did meet with SRC, and we do have plans to work with you guys and other organizations. Same thing with Mr. Tyree Wallace. He was a part of that meeting as well. We are working with counsel, with other departments, to find some type of programs and opportunities to help work with the youth. Mr. Waters, you and I have spoken, and we are still working with DEP and EPA to set up a meeting. We're also still actively working with the Stormwater Program, along with engineering, along with emergency management, to make sure that we're monitoring the floods, especially with all additional rain that's going on. And we will continue to work with all three entities to come to some type of record... resolving that issue. But it's ongoing, as you know. And we had Mr. Cohen about parking and illegal dumping, noise disturbance, quality of life issues. Only thing we can say is we're committed to still working with code enforcement, law enforcement, to address these issues. And code did go out to address some of the neighbors, and if there's any violations, code will continue to monitor that. So those were the questions, and we are constantly working on those issues. That concludes it.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, do we have any public comment this evening?
Yes. James Waters?
Pretty good. But I have one question. This came from Nextdoor. It has to do with flashing lights on the stop signs at Lafayette Street. Are they supposed to be there permanently flashing because they're not... not really sure whether it's Franklin or Ford or, you know, down that way? What I would like to celebrate is the danger to the power grid out back was repaired in lightning speed. I don't know. I know that another concerned citizen had taken a picture of it and posted it, but whatever button was pushed, we need to keep pushing it because I found a couple of other ones too. So that's another thing that I'm working on. I mean, you know, the flooding and the damage to the park is on the back burner right now until I get a few more detailed documentation. I'd like to pass by a few things of what the chief's interview was that I thought was really great. There has been some good feedback on my post on Nextdoor. Flooding, blocking access to hospitals, quality of life, junk cars, trash, trunks. Pedestrian crosswalks, maintain leadership, training, power grid and cable safety, mental health, monitoring, mentoring, breaking the circle, big brother, unity, transparency, bring back the family, trust, get on the streets, partnership, know their name, change culture, scams, improve trust, inform the community. There was one prospective chief that said that he will give his cell number, and it should be called after an hour if nobody gets in touch with him, which I thought was really a good thing. I mean, we go down here with the homeless and, you know, all the other things that we need to deal with. As people have said on Nextdoor that, you know, Norristown is what it is, and I say, "All you people are doing everything you can to make up for what was done 50 years ago." And I think that you're doing a great job. And I guess some of the accomplishments I see that bother me get fixed than in reality.
Good evening.
Good evening.
First and foremost, my concern is with council itself. I live in the 4th District. I've been in this town for over 60 years. I have never met my councilperson, never. I knew Lauren before she resigned to seek further office, but I think as voice of the people, you should be out there with your constituents. You should be talking to them, meeting with them, especially since this very important Chief of Police situation has come up. You are the voice of the 1st, 2nd, 3rd, 4th District, and you council members at large, you hit them all. Now unless you're going to sit back there and make decisions that you want and not what your constituency wants, then you don't need to be up there. Bottom line. I would like... I mean, I'll offer my councilperson the American Legion Ballroom if you want to have it down, if you want to have a meeting up there with the people in your district, which I think you should, each and every one of you. You know, I mean, I just can't reiterate enough how important it is to get the voice of your constituents, the people that put you there. Don't forget, they voted you in, they can vote you out. You understand? That's for each and every one of you. I've been in this town 60 years. I've seen them all come and go. My second issue is code enforcement. Who handles code enforcement? Nobody? All right. There are some properties in the 400 block of Moore Street, guys come in from Philadelphia, tear down a retaining wall, leave everything a mess. That address is 421 Moore Street. Leave everything a mess, and when I come down the street, walk through my neighborhood, I see this whole plight. I don't see no permits posted. The other address is 450 or 452 Moore Street, where the gentleman lost his life in the fire several months back. I hear guys in there working every day. Yet again, I see no permits posted. If I got a posted permit to get anything done in my property, they damn sure will have to get one themselves. So I expect or... I expect council to move on that, just like I expect council to get with your constituents.
Thank you.
I'm here, I guess complaining. I'm being sued for unpaid bills at Stormwater. The bills were sent to a job that I held in the borough here for 20 years, and I lived in the Poconos for the past 10. And they said Berkheimer Associates didn't know where I lived or where to send the bill, but they know where to send the tax bill. So I'm asking to be excused of $1,200 hours of legal fees. And I asked the law firm, I said, "I'll cut you a check today," which was last week, the 4th or the 7th of last week, and the girl refused payment. Where do I stand? She goes, "No, you got to pay the legal fees." The bills were never sent to me. I never received them, Berkheimer. So somebody dropped the ball, and I just feel like I'm getting reamed. I pay over $30,000 a year. I have investment properties in the borough. Well over $30,000 a year I paying taxes. Everything's up to date, my rental licenses, my properties. So I'm asking somebody to reach out and help me on this one, and I can pay my $800 bill for a Stormwater runoff.
I'm going to direct you to Ms. Pfister, our Finance Director.
Great. Thank you. Now getting somewhere, I'm done that. Thank you for your help.
Thank you.
Hey, good afternoon. Good evening.
Good evening.
I want to address this parking tickets that we've been receiving, parking 20 feet at the corner. So on West Washington Street, we've been parking there for 13 years. There's no signs or anything stating that we can't park there. And the whole neighborhood has been receiving $50 tickets. And I just believe that if this was going to be, you know, something that's ongoing, that there should have been some type of signs posted, you know what I'm saying, that you can't park there. Even talking to the meter people, like, they were like, "We didn't get no warning. They just told us to come do it." It's not fair to the community. Just not fair. So how many of y'all want to pay my ticket? I ain't laughing. You know what I'm saying? I'm serious. You know, because after, you know, certain amount of tickets, they want to come put boots on your car, you know? And it's been quite a few boots in our neighborhood. And I still think, I just believe it's unfair. It really is unfair. Post 20, you know, 30, 60 days, post something to give us warning. It's not just my... Not just my block, but it's all over Norristown. And, you know, this is unfair. 20 feet to the corner, okay, and then they say it's in the book, it's in your driver's manual, but we've been doing this. And as you know, parking is horrible, horrible, in Norristown as it is. It's horrible. If I have to park two or three blocks away from my house, that's horrible. If I come home 3:00 or 4:00 o'clock in the morning, you know, from work or wherever, I got to walk three or four blocks. Thank God that, like, my neighborhood just right now is still safe. You know what I'm saying? So who do I talk to, Rebecca?
Chief Angelucci is directly behind you.
All right. That's who I'm talking to. Thank you.
Thank you. For the parking ticket, parking broadly, we're working on.
Good evening, everyone. I live on Basin Street. I've been here 30 years, well, on Basin Street. The tickets, it's ridiculous. We have people flying up Basin Street from Swede Street. We have so many children on this block. We have people bringing their trucks home with trailers, parking, taking up three, four, parking. They don't even live there. We follow... Well, I ain't going to say wait. I followed him home and told him, "Don't park on our block no more." I'm just going to be honest with you, because he parks... You live all the way on Popular Street. Why are you on Basin Street? We have people parking from Powell Street all the way down. We do know, they say, no parking on the left side of Basin. Each house has three, four cars. Where are we supposed to park? When we had a 1,200 block of Powell Street, they come to Basin Street. That pushes that... Them on Basin down to Lucas. Where are we supposed to park? I get off at 10:00 at night. I have to park... I had to park across from Nancy and Lucas, call my daughter, and tell her to just stand outside. So, I mean, it's so much stuff that goes on, flying, parking. They park their cars, they unload their cars for days, four or five days. They don't even live on the block. I work from home. I know you don't live here. So then what... See, I'm the person... I'm the governor. I will knock on your window and be like, "Yeah, you got to roll out." So I'm asking for a solution before I handle it, and then y'all going to be coming to visit me. So it's... I'm just keeping it 100 with y'all. You know, we have a good block, but there's outside people come, and they park there. So I'm just asking, chief. All right. You know, I'll go sit with the chief, harass him. That's all I have to say for now. If I need to come back next month, I'll come back. I'll just go sit in chief's office. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just want to ask one question. What is the timeline for us to get a Chief of Police?
So generally, we respond to the following meeting to questions.
I don't remember writing my name, so... But that's my question. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can he call?
By the way, I am not his candidate, Mark Benjamin. I'm another Mark Benjamin.
Hi, good evening, counsel. I wanted to talk about ICE activity in Norristown, make sure that you're aware. So what we've noticed since, you know, since ICE activity has really stepped up, has been that Sundays have been a big day for ICE agents coming out, hunting, or whatever they do. They do start very early in the morning, like 6:00 AM. And so two Sundays ago, they were discovered at the movie theater out there on Ridge. So six unmarked SUVs, and then they were observed driving very fast down Ridge towards town. They were also observed driving the wrong way on Green Street and recklessly driving Blackberry Alley, ignoring stop signs, running red lights on multiple streets. At one point, they were in this municipal lot. They were, you know, parked where our police park. I'm sure there's security cam footage that you could find. So basically, what you have there in that situation is you have armed people with those, like, tactical vest things and the mask, you know, they wear the face mask, and they're at our police station, in effect impersonating a police officer, you might say. One car did have those red and blue, like, light things on the back, like, blacked-out SUV with the, you know, little things. So my question is, are ICE agents allowed to be here at our police station, especially given that Norristown has, in theory, committed to not giving any aid to federal ICE agents? And, you know, can I put flashing lights on my car and carry a gun around and wear a mask in the police station parking lot, or would that be a problem? Like, I have an idea that that would probably be a problem. So these federal agents, they're behaving very dangerously. Someone's going to get mowed down by an SUV as they speed through our town trying to do their crimes against humanity.
Thank you. We have two presentations this evening. First up, we have our EMS presentation by Chief Thomas Trudjansky.
There we go. I spoke to Mr. Leitner earlier today. He said I have about an hour max, but I added a little bit, so it might be about an hour and 15 minutes. Try to have you out of here by 8:00. For those that don't know you, my name is Thomas Trudjansky, I'm Chief of Plymouth Ambulance, have been for 20 years this year. Prior to that, held the position as a Assistant Chief Captain and a Paramedic prior to that, but also a Paramedic. To give some of you, if not all of you, an overview of our organization. Little better?
Can you hold on?
I will not touch the mic. I can duck. So to continue, it's been a little while. I don't know if many people on council are familiar with Plymouth Ambulance, what the organization does, but I had a PowerPoint provided so you can get an overview of the organization. Afterwards, if you have any questions, I'll take any questions from either you or the general public, if that's allowed. Okay? So Plymouth Ambulance, as you can see, we are one of the leaders in EMS and Emergency Medical Services in Montgomery County. Out of 18 organizations, we run approximately 16,000 dispatches, over 16,000 dispatches a year. The organization covers 12 municipalities. As you can see, there's, without having to go through everything, the municipalities in this area are Norristown Borough, Plymouth Township, East Norrington, West Norrington, Bridgeport, parts of Worcester, a large portion of the Turnpike, Interchange, Norristown Interchange, the Northeast Extension, and the Blue Route. And then there's five territories also out towards Lower Frederick Region. But since we're doing a Norristown presentation, we'll just continue with Norristown. Areas that we service I just mentioned, the organization has a multitude of different assets that we can supply, not only to police and fire, but to other EMS organizations. And it's outlined a little bit here. We haven't gone into depth, but if you would like to come over to the organization, our main station, which is on Germantown Pike and Plymouth Meeting, you're more than welcome. We have a substation here in Norristown at Main and Green Street, at East Main and Green Street, and that's been there since, the actual brick facility's been there since 2013. However, Plymouth Ambulance has been providing Emergency Medical Service to Norristown Borough since 2001, when Montgomery Hospital disbanded the paramedic service out of the hospital. Most of the men and women that currently work at Plymouth Ambulance were either volunteers at Plymouth Ambulance and worked at Montgomery Hospital, so it was an easy transition when that took place back in 2000. I happened to start in 1990 at Montgomery Hospital as a medic. But some of the specialized vehicles that we have that complement not only the Norristown Police Department, but also Norristown Fire Department, we work in conjunction with, are some of our five-ton high water trucks. We know that the area is well-known for flooding. We have two on service, and we work in conjunction with Chief O'Donnell and his staff on the fireside. Our mini ambulance, which we call, which is a smaller version of an ambulance, that's a six-wheel-drive vehicle. Back in 2019, it was used here... I'm sorry, 2017, it was used here for 19 transports just in the borough. So we try to get some specialized equipment so we can get Emergency Medical Services, the paramedics, to the patients. That weekend, it was a Friday, Saturday, and half a Sunday, 19 patients were transported in that out to suburban community hospital because we could not get ambulances, police could not get to the scene, fire couldn't get to the scene due to the amount of snow that happened in a 36-hour period. With that, some of our devices that we... We're known to be a leading edge in EMS. We have Lucas devices, which perform some cardiopulmonary resuscitation, some chest decompress... or some chest compressions during cardiac arrest. The Hand Tevi system, which is one of the... We were the first organization, I think, in the state of Pennsylvania to have this Hand Tevi pediatric system. It virtually doesn't eliminate all, but virtually eliminates all drug dosage miscalculations to pediatric cases. Any pediatric cardiac arrest, respiratory arrest, severe trauma, anything like that. So we were the first to start that. That was a heavy investment, but ultimately, it's for the better outcome of a pediatric case. There is one other squad that just recently picked up this system about a year ago in Montgomery County, but we started the Hand Tevi pediatric system five years ago. We will also be another one of the first with one of our equipment pieces, our heart monitors, our defibrillators, which run about $52,000 apiece. Zoll, which is one of the leaders, there's Zoll and Physio. Zoll is releasing out, it's called a Xenix Monitor. We are the first recipient on the EMS side on the whole East Coast in this nation to receive that. Big investment. Those monitors cost upwards of $1 million to outfit all of our trucks. But once again, trying to keep up with the standard of medicine and provide better medicine, higher-quality medicine, not only through training of the employees and the volunteers, but also through equipment. Some of the other equipment that we use for intravenous intraosseous medication delivery. We have a little bit of, somewhere around 25 to 26 vehicles, 13 ambulances, four medic responders, and the rest is ancillary support staff that you saw a little bit earlier, along with some officer vehicles. The medic responder units, just so you're aware, we introduced those about two and a half years ago. They can do everything that an ambulance can do, they just can't transport. So what we do is we either have a paramedic in there or an officer, an officer being either battalion chief, assistant chief, captain, lieutenant, that drives around in this medic unit, right? Has everything in there from all the drugs, all the medications, all the equipment that you have seen, can get to the scene a little bit quicker. Hopefully, providing, you know... My saying is, I don't know how long you can hold your breath, but every second counts, right? So we try to get the professionals there as soon as we possibly can. So another investment that the organization has taken on, another first, it's a little bit of repetitious, but back in 2010, we started our own bariatric ambulance, the first one in this area, and then that led off within about six months of Philadelphia Fire coming up, their EMS system, looking at the unit for three or four days, and then going with the system that we devised. The bariatric ambulance, first one in the county. It's the only one in the county, other than Montgomery County themselves purchased one, but it really doesn't get much use because we're the first call for that. That unit goes into anywhere in Montgomery County, Chester, and Delaware County, to assist any of the bariatric-type patients. So this was... This was looked at as not only a twofold system. The first system was to help the paramedics and the EMTs when you're dealing with an obese patient, right? Sometimes they're 4, 6, 7, 800 pounds. You have to move them from a second floor, first floor, third floor, down to the ambulance. This piece of equipment carries the equipment needed. It also affords the patient the dignity, right? You could put a patient on a 19-inch-wide litter, which most ambulance cots are, right? Or you can put them on a little bit of a wider litter, give them a little bit more dignity when you're transporting them out of the house into the back of the ambulance, or from the ambulance into the hospital, you know? Sometimes people are in dire straits. We just like to provide dignity and also a higher level of care for those types of patients. Couple of the other things that Plymouth Ambulance has always been involved in is our special operations team, and that's comprised of 12 paramedics, two doctors, a physician assistant. And what we do is we provide services to the Montgomery County Major Incident Response Team as medical support for the team and anybody that gets hurt. as medical support for the team and anybody that gets hurt. And as you can see up there, what the, the Merc team responds to, we also provide medical service for the Montgomery County Sheriff's Bomb Disposal Team, not only in Montgomery County, but also three other counties, second due in to Philadelphia. And we've been on the Special Weapons and Tactics SWAT teams since way before my time, early, early nineties. So all of these special operations teams, these, this equipment, the ambulances themselves, we try to keep at their peak performance, have the, have the latest, have the newest, so it doesn't go into failure when you really need to save a life. The special operations team itself, that does not incur any expense to Montgomery County's Major Incident Response Team, which is pretty much all the police departments in Montgomery County when they go out on either protests, riots, unruly areas, the Sheriff's Department, or even the SWAT teams in Montgomery County. That's all an expense that we pick up as an organization. Couple of other things that we have that also highlights the coincidences of working with the police departments and the fire departments is our rehab trailer. We have multiple generators. Everything is not listed on here, but this is all for the service for the communities. Nursing homes have a power failure, we have generators to power nursing homes. Heaters, lighting, cooling. The rehab trailer for, our rehab trailer consists of that tent, multiple misting fans, that's only just a small percentage of what the equipment we have, generators to run that, heat, cool, all depends. Could be three o'clock in the morning on a February morning, you know, and it's ten degrees out with fifty-mile-an-hour winds. Firefighters are outside, police are outside on an activity, three, four hours, you know, they start to freeze up. We provide hel, shelter for them. So a couple of other things that we do regarding our involvement. One of the biggest things is, and this is kind of an end note on a little bit about Plymouth Ambulance, is our community involvement. For anybody that wants CPR, first aid, AED training, feel free to call the, the main number at Plymouth Ambulance, or go to medic308.org. It'll pull up our website, and you can see there where you can put in, you know, for training for CPR, first aid, and AED. That's all done free for community members. And that's not just Norristown, it's any community that, you know, somebody wants to learn CPR. Because if you're out at the mall, you're out at dinner, we would much rather have somebody be able to start some type of lifesaving activity, because it does take time to get police, fire, and EMS to the scene. But if, the more people we can train, and something happens there in front of them, and they can start to at least assist, the better outcome it is for the patient, or the family member, or the friend. The community involvement here, though, started fifteen years ago. This is one of our biggest community involvements that we like to take pride in. It's called Operation Christmas Kids, and this will be sixteen years coming up, but the, the idea behind that is for pediatrics. The county EMS, police, and fire are all involved, state police, Philadelphia Highway, you name it. It's not just Montgomery County, primarily Montgomery County, but other, other counties get involved. And the idea behind this is to raise as many toys as we can get. We meet up on a specific day. It changes, it's usually the second week of December. Everybody meets up. Plymouth Ambulance around nine-thirty, ten o'clock in the morning. All the organizations, fire, police, EMS, they all bring tons of unwrapped gifts. We have a big gathering, some music, public's welcome to come over there, free, free pictures with Santa Claus. And then at one o'clock, we mount up. Last year, we had ninety-eight strong pieces of apparatus. We leave Plymouth Ambulance, we go down to Bryn Mawr Hospital. We drop off about a thousand gifts there for their pediatric unit and their NICU unit, their neonatal intensive care unit. And then we go from there, and we go to St. Christopher's, and we drop off close to seven, eight thousand gifts there. I got a call several years ago about, right after COVID, from the CEO of St. Christopher's Hospital, and he said, "If it wasn't for the organization, what you guys do, please don't stop it." That was his original question. "Are you guys coming down to St. Christopher's this year?" And I said, "Absolutely, why would we not?" And he goes, "Well, if you guys didn't come here, we wouldn't have presents to give out throughout the whole year." So it's not just designed around Christmas and the holidays. It's designed for if a kid is in St. Christopher's or Bryn Mawr Hospital with a terminal illness, a tragic event, a broken arm or a broken leg, and they're in a hospital over their birthday, they can afford to give them presents, make it a little bit more comfortable. So that's one of the biggest things that Plymouth Ambulance does besides lifesaving for the community. If I, if you would like, Leonard, I can go over a couple of the statistics here. So call volume just in Norristown, so we get dispatched a little over sixteen thousand calls a year. Call volume for Norristown in twenty-twenty-four was six thousand three hundred and seven. That gives you a breakdown of the calls. You're more than welcome, you know, it's saved on the computer, you can read it, print it out if you'd like. I don't want to hold the, the rest of the meeting up here tonight. But that's twenty-twenty-four, so sixty-three hundred calls dispatched in the three-square mile. And that's coming right out of the Norristown station here. We have seen a, a high increase last year and this year, so what we have done operationally is usually each station, or we have four stations, the Norristown station, the main station in Plymouth, East Norrington, one out in Lower Frederick. But the three stations down here, since the call volume has been increasing at about an eight to ten percent rate a year, we have, we've, we try to staff each station with two ALS trucks. ALS trucks means advanced life support, that is a paramedic and an EMT on each truck. It's not a BLS truck, it's not a medic responder with just an EMT in it. They are paramedic-staffed trucks. We've been able to do that last month, up to fifteen days out of thirty. So we're, you know, we're heading in the right direction. But sixty-three hundred and seven calls in twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five, we're up to thirty-five sixty-two already. Same breakdown, and you can see how they rank dispatches and what they're for. And I know a, a topic that I'd like to bring up, maybe it's something on council's mind also, is the transportation center in twenty-twenty-four, we went over there for two hundred, just that address, to East Lafayette. Two hundred and sixty-one times in twenty-twenty-four, and you can see already in twenty-twenty-five, it's probably going to double if we continue to go at that rate statistically, two hundred and one calls. That's all I have for you. You have any questions, for you, I'm here to answer them, if the community has, and if they're allowed to speak. If not, medic308.org. Any questions?
Counsel, any questions?
I'm curious. Those transportation calls, who pays you for those?
That's a good question. Well, unfortunately, when you deal with the homeless, you know, you, there's, it, it costs well over sixteen hundred, eighteen hundred dollars to roll a truck out of there with a stamp. An ambulance, an ambulance by itself, two hundred and forty-one thousand dollars. That's no equipment in there. So that's just your car. And you want to put your cup in there, and you know, you want to put your nice sound system additional in there, you know? So a monitor, fifty thousand dollars. So a fully-equipped ambulance, our ambulances are close to three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, for one, with equipment, a stretcher, the drugs, all the different specialty tools. So when we do respond to calls like that, you know, we eat it. There's no reimbursement.
Thank you.
I have a question.
So is it in-house or in-house, they are receiving?
So.
Are they all due to?
We don't, sorry. Typically, just counsel is, so people ask some questions. I know you offer to the public, so I'm wondering, after your presentation, if you're willing to take some questions out in the hall. Thank you. Councilman McCoy?
Yes, I was just curious about your CPR training. If we were to host something here, would you come out to the community, or would we have to come to you guys?
If it's going to be in-house here, yeah, we could, we could set it up.
Okay, thank you.
We, we could talk about that, because we have to limit class size, you know?
Say that one more time.
You say you have to limit class size?
Yeah, it all depends, you know, how many instructors I can get on a certain day.
Gotcha, okay.
But yeah, we can hold that here, it's not a problem.
Okay, thank you.
Vice President Bates?
I'll just take it back off of his, Councilman McCoy's question. What, what's the size class, the size of the class?
So usually, one instructor can handle like twelve, up to twelve.
All right, all right, that's a lot, okay. And then my other question was, out of all the calls you take, how many bomb disposals have you guys done?
Bomb disposals? With the bomb team? Well, I can tell you, it's, it's more than you would, you would imagine. I think, you know, if you talk to the sheriff when he wasn't in his role here.
I can say this, we are, so. Bomb disposal is set up by Department of Homeland Security throughout the country. There are different regions, whatever. This, this region is in the top ten as far as busiest in the whole country. And they partner with Bomb Disposals. So in my other life.
It's not once every other three weeks, or every three months, it's a lot more than that.
Counsel, any other questions?
Good.
Thank you so much.
I'm around if you need us. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Our next presentation is for two forty West Johnson Highway.
Good evening, Councilmember. It's time to build something, right? So tonight, we have Mr. Matthews, who wants to do a presentation for an apartment unit, rather, apartment building at two forty West Johnson Highway for fifty units. He's here tonight with his partner. He's going to go over this presentation. The important thing is that he has not gone through any zoning processes. He's not gone through any land development processes. This is an opportunity, especially for the new council members, this is an opportunity for you to hear his proposal for the first time. You give him feedback before he starts to embark on those processes. So he's here tonight to give you an overview, and I encourage you, Counsel, to ask him questions that, whatever it is that you feel will be, will help you in making a decision, whether this is the right direction he's taking. This is an opportunity to give him that before he puts his money to the project.
Mr. Matthews?
Good evening, Counsel. Thank you for giving us the opportunity to speak today and to talk to you about a project that we're working on at two forty West Johnson Highway. It's being called Juniper Flats. It's a proposed fifty-unit apartment building that's being proposed on a one-and-a-half-acre-sized lot. Before I get into the project, I just wanted to give you a quick background on us and some of the work that we're doing in the area. We are owner, operators, managers, and builders of real estate, which is between multifamily apartment housing as well as commercial and industrial. We were part of the team that proposed a project at the Norristown State Hospital. We were runner-ups in that project in partnership with a company called Urban Atlantic out of DC, and we came in with, as a partner, as RAR Capital. And during that process of pursuing the Norristown State Hospital, we spent about six to eight months in the, kind of going on like a listening tour and meeting with a lot of the residents here, talking with a lot of the different business owners. And, and we learned a lot about Norristown in general and the borough. And it was really during that process where we wanted to lean in more on Norristown and invest here, primarily because we looked at Norristown as almost like the hole in the doughnut for this quadrant of Montgomery County. And what I mean by that is, you know, you have these surrounding towns such as Conshohocken, KOP, Plymouth Meeting, where you have a lot of high incomes, you have a lot of developed areas with a lot of commerce, and there's a lot of high rents and high incomes, and you're right touching that, you're right next to that. King of Prussia's only ten minutes away. But when you look at the level of investment that's being done in Norristown, it's just not matching that area. So we looked at it as a real opportunity to come in to assist the borough in creating ratables and increasing the amount of commerce and local investment. So we looked at two forty West Johnson Highway, which is a one-and-a-half-acre parcel, and we acquired it in October of 2024. And during that time, we talked to the neighboring property owners, which consisted of retail owner-operators, as well as just local residents. And during that process, we kind of talked with people and said, "Hey, we're looking at bringing an apartment building here to bring really more young professionals and higher incomes in the area, as well as supporting seniors that are looking to downsize and sell their homes and move into something that's more fitting for their needs." We don't have any steps in our proposed unit, so that's another really plus for seniors that are looking for housing. And that's really the group that we're marketing to, young professionals and seniors and people in between. We're providing like a differentiated product. This is more upscale housing that's going to be market-rate. The proposed building has an elevator. It has a number of amenities, such as a gym, a lobby, a roof deck, package room, a lot of outdoor space, and all the units will have a balcony. The finishes for the building will be just a differentiated, a higher-level type of finish. Some of the feedback that we got from the neighbors, between business owners and residents, was that they were looking for really just options for housing that would contribute to the area. And the business owners particularly were looking for more pedestrian foot traffic. So when we designed this property, the way we had, I don't know if we can go to the next slide that shows the layout of the building?
If I can interrupt for a moment, too. We'll get the slides on, as he just describes maybe the number of units.
Yes.
That are going to be one or two bedrooms.
Yeah, there's fifty units in total, of which seventy-five percent of the units will be one bedrooms, and the remainder will be a mix of two bedrooms and studios. The total square footage of the building will be about fifty thousand square feet. And the total amount of parking spaces will be sixty-eight car parking. The way we laid the building out, which you'll see in the upcoming slide, is we, we laid it out as a L-shaped building, where the parking was really focused and pointed towards the rear of the shopping center, which is the Logan Shop, or the Seventeen Hundred Markley. And the reason we did it that way is because we didn't want light shining into the, the homes nearby on Pine Street. Also, talking with the residents of Pine Street, some of the feedback was, we wanted to have an ample buffer between the homes. And so what we proposed is a row of Arborvady green giants between our property line and the neighboring residential homeowners, just to make it so that they wouldn't see our building, and they would just have like a green wall as part of their backyard, which would add a lot of value and just aesthetically more pleasing. So that was some of the, some of the feedback that we, we listened to and that we incorporated into our plan. Another important part of this project that we, we really thought about was some of the improvements that were being done by PennDOT to better improve the flow of traffic coming up and down Johnson Highway. So with this project, yes, we're introducing fifty new units to the area, but we think it's in line with the overall PennDOT vision in terms of bringing traffic into the area, but also making the flow of traffic a little bit better, so it would alleviate congestion a little bit more. Okay, so here's the plan. So we want to maximize that. I can have my, my partner, Tim Avazzi, is here. I can have him go through kind of the way the building is laid out, some of the building materials that we're using, as well as just some of the thought process behind the design and build.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Fatima Avazzi, Josh's partner. In terms of design here, we're going more of a design that's going to blend in with existing buildings around the vicinity. In terms of material, we're going extremely high-end. We're using cement, fiber cement boards for the exterior, along with a combination of brick and stone. On the interior lobby, we're spending a lot of money on, proposing to spend a lot of money on lobby areas along with the manuvary spaces. And then in terms of finishes inside the units, we're using porcelain tiles on, on the kitchens. We're not using any, in the bathrooms, we're not using any carpet in the building. It's going to be all luxury vinyl tile throughout, LVT. Hallways will be same material, hardy, the vinyl material as well. And then roof deck. And then roof deck, where it's going to be made out of composite wood decking. And all the balconies are going to be dressed with paver system on top of fiberglass roof.
So that's kind of like a quick overview on the project. Like I said earlier, we're kind of going on a listening tour. Just wanted to get some feedback from you all and really, you know, lean into that feedback and figure out ways that we can incorporate that into the project.
Counsel, any questions?
Yes, I have a question. You said that the prices for rent would be at market value. What is that at the moment?
That's a, that's a great question. We don't plan on delivering this project. We're assuming it'll take about a year to get approvals and about a year and a half to construct. But as it stands right now, I'd say our one-bedroom apartments are probably going to be in the $1,500 range. Our two-bedrooms will probably be somewhere between $1,800 to $2,000. Our studios will probably be in the $1,100 to $1,300 range.
Just out of curiosity, any, and I know it's not there now, but any consideration for commercial space?
Good question. I mean, if you, I don't know if we can get to the lot dimension, but the way the lot is shaped, it doesn't have as much frontage along Johnson Highway. So when you're a business, you know, you want to be as close to the street as you can. And the way the building is, it's probably set back by 100 feet or so from the street. So, you know, it really puts the, a business, a ground-floor business, a little bit at a disadvantage. However, we are next door to the shopping center, and there could be some, some ways to incorporate the visibility from going into the shopping center, but the site sits a little bit high. So, I mean, it's something we can certainly look into. But then you end up having a competing interest between the people that are coming for the business and want to park, and then you have residents that want to park. And we don't want to end up putting more cars on the streets congestion, creating congestion for like the neighbor, neighborhood property owners.
I have a question. I don't know if you covered this, so if you did, I apologize. Are, will the units have like in-unit washing and drying, or do you have to?
That's a great question, and I didn't bring that up, so thanks for, for bringing that up. So, yes, we will have washer and dryers in the unit. We will also have, the kitchen package consists of dishwasher as well along with all the other amenities. Every unit will have outdoor space as well. So each unit will have a balcony and/or a patio.
Councilwoman Robinson?
Thank you so much for your presentation. I just was wondering, I was going to ask about the commercial as well. It just might help, in general, I know this presentation is very early in the process, but it was labeled as a mixed-use building with a commercial inference, like there was going to be something. But when I looked through it detailed, I only saw the residential part. So just so that there could be clarity, I think that might be helpful then to understand.
Yeah, I'm sorry. So let me just take it a step back. So about the way our, you know, quote-unquote, mixed-use is, we have this fitness area, right? Which is effectively going to be, you know, a gym, which, you know, we're, could we find an operator to run the gym? I think so. I think that would add a lot of value to the building. Normally, in some of our apartment buildings, our gyms kind of just open to the residents. But I think that's certainly something that we could, we could lean into here. It is, is part of our mixed-use project. I mean, you can consider the gym manned or unmanned and still, you know, commercial space. I mean, I don't know how you view that exactly.
And then I would love to hear more about the detailed benefits of what a project like this can do for a community. But just before I do, and this is not, I think you as a developer or a group, your problems necessarily to solve. But as we think about proposing, I would really be interested in proposals that help us understand how to not only bring in people, but to address the people that are here. What I think what happens constantly is that there's always this kind of romanticizing of gentrification. Not to say that that's what you're doing, but they're romanticizing that in order to get what we need, we can't get it from what we have, so we have to go get other people. And in naming that, there is already like a dense population here, right? We are full. You mentioned the, the young professional as well as the senior. There's a, there's a big gap of people in between there. And so again, not your problem necessarily to solve, but it might be interesting to think about. Like, how do you add to that? How do you flesh out those dynamics? I agree with you that Narsetown could deeply use some investment. You made me look it up. Why does a donut have a hole, right? A donut has a hole because it helps it to cook evenly around. But I will just assume that what you meant is that we are the sweet spot, right? That we can build our own unique kind of space. And perhaps we don't need the hole, or we don't need to be exactly like everybody else. But we do have something special that is just our, our own to build on. And so in that same framework, I would love to hear what you think the benefits are specifically to this Narsetown community with such a beautiful project like this, knowing that we're also facing poverty, the unhoused, a lot to build. I think that there are some things that, you've named some of them in this proposal. But if we can lean into some of those benefits, I think that might be helpful to hear.
Yeah, no, absolutely. The feedback that we've heard from residents and business owners, going back to when we first started pursuing the Norristown State Hospital, was ratables. How do we get ratables? And, you know, even talking with counsel at the time, it was we need to attract more business. And attracting more business ends up bringing more opportunity, right? And more opportunity allows people to raise, you know, incomes, allows people just different ways to change the trajectory of, like, whatever path they're on. So when we came in here, we were looking at, when we had those conversations, you know, homeowners saying our taxes are too high. Business owners are saying, I'm not selling enough goods. So we think the value add is bringing higher incomes into an area that has a disproportionate amount of affordable housing, which Norristown, and I think in Pottstown, has basically the bulk of all of Montgomery County's affordable housing, which tells me that you need more market rate housing. I mean, that's statistically, there should be somewhat of a balance. And, you know, where that balance is, you know, we can talk about that for, for days. But I think as it stands right now, there is not enough market rate housing in Norristown. I'm not saying everything should be market. I think there's a balance. But I think this project is taking, you know, one step forward with that. And if you look at what's happening with the, the state hospital site, it's similar, right? It's not all rental. There's a big for-sale component. And the way we had proposed that project was bringing more for-sale homeownership opportunities to families that want to, almost like starter homes, which that project seems to be taking that path anyway. So I think, you know, I'm not sure if I'm answering all of your question, but I think a lot of it is, I think we need more people in the tax base. You need to bring more residents in. And I think when, when I mentioned the hole in the donut, it wasn't, I wasn't saying it in a derogatory way. It was more like, you know, how do we, you know, fill that in, right? And I think, you know, Norristown, the way we saw it, it has a lot to offer. All these towns like Conshohocken, Plymouth, they don't have a downtown, right? So where do you go? If you're in Conshohocken and you're living there, where do you go? You go to Philly. You're not coming to Norristown as much as you would, you know, a Phoenix Bowl. And the thing is, the Main Street has so much to offer. It has a lot of character architecturally, it has a lot of history. And that story, I feel like is not being told enough. And then when you look at the farm park, you're looking at Elmwood Park Zoo, you're looking at the accessibility to the turnpike and all the investments going on. The moment I came out here, I saw it, but I wasn't coming out here until the state hospital brought me out here. And then I saw it. I think more people need to see the story. And I think bringing in new residents, it's word of mouth, they pass it on to the next person, and then, you know, you just get momentum. So, I mean, that's, that's, that's the best feedback I can provide for you. But I think there's a real story here that just needs to be told.
And sir, I also see that you had quite a few lists of completed projects. I'm specifically interested to learn more about your, your projects in the Diamond Street area in Philadelphia. I won't hold your time to do it today, but would you be open to a further conversation about some of the economic impacts that, like, the results that have come? If you've done all this work, there should be some evidence of it, so I'd love to hear more about that.
Absolutely. You said another time or right now?
Another, we can do it another time. Thank you so much.
No, absolutely. Appreciate that.
Any other questions?
I have one more question. I want to make sure I'm saying this right. Did you say you did research on the income, like, within the area? Or just like surrounding areas? Like, do you know like the median income for someone in Narsetown?
So I don't know that number off the top of my head. I do know that it's significantly lower than the neighboring areas such as Conshohocken, Plymouth, and Plymouth Meeting.
Okay, I just want to know, because the, the reason I'm asking is because you stated it as something where, yes, people are coming in, but then people in Narsetown should be able to live here as well. And I just want to make sure, especially because you're talking about seniors, seniors have, most of them have fixed incomes. So I just want to make sure we're also like thinking of that. But I just wanted to know if you had done any research into income, median income in Narsetown just to see, just because you're talking about like market price and that's significantly high, I just wanted to make sure.
Well, yeah, I think that's why I kind of brought up earlier the, the, the level of affordable housing that Norristown has already. There's, if you, statistically, if you look at Montgomery County and where the affordable housing is located, a disproportionate amount of it is in Norristown statistically. It just is. Like, if you go to the main line, if you go to Conshohocken, if you go to Plymouth Meeting, KOP, all the new apartments being built there, all the housing being built there, none of it is considered affordable housing. It's not, you can't reach the 50% AMI or lower. You can't reach 80% AMI or lower. So as far as the exact statistics for Norristown AMI-wise in this particular area, I don't have it off the top of my head, but I do know it is much, much lower. You know, I think there's a story to be told in having mixed incomes in an area. I think this project could be, again, to what I said earlier, a balance of that. But I still think Norristown has, has more opportunity to, to grow their market rate housing.
And then I have, really just a design question for the area and this project. Early on, you said one of your goals that you heard from the listening tour was really to increase foot traffic to businesses. This location is near businesses, so I could see how that might help. But I, and I know that these are very, very early renderings. I see the parking lot and then just like the exit back to the road, right? And I'm wondering if you've had conversations with either of the, the shopping center development on one side or the business on the other side to help connect maybe literal foot traffic versus like I have to get in my car and drive to the shopping center around the corner? And then similarly, if you've given thought of like this design and the scope of the neighborhood, of which is all one or two stories, not four stories?
Yeah, are we able to go back to the map, the Google map aerial view? Because directly, I guess to the east of our building is a four-story apartment building? Yeah, four-story apart. Yeah, yeah, our elevation, the way this site is, is kind of built up. So we're probably, you know, 10 feet higher than the road, which is pretty significant. But to the east of our building, where it says Norristown Associates at the bottom middle of this, of this screen, that is a 50-unit apartment building approximately, and it's four-story in height as well. So we thought, you know, when you talk about scale and within the neighborhood, we thought it was within that scale. As far as the, the neighboring businesses, we did get letters of support from the surrounding business owners as well as the residents along Pine Street.
Yeah, I'm making this up. Weren't there, wasn't there a four-story apartment building there prior to the time when it was Pizza Hut? Is that, that's that same one? Forty-one?
So councilmembers, just as a note, this district is the CR, this commercial retail district. It does not permit this use by right. Therefore, they would have to go to the zoning hearing board. So you will be notified. You know when they are going to go to the zoning hearing board to ask for variance. And you still have an opportunity to, again, give your feedback, to give either your support, neutral, whatever it is that you choose to have. But that feedback you've given the developers very critical. So that as he goes back to his plans, at least he'll have that in mind, and he'll know what to think of to make sure that he's at least understanding and meeting your expectations.
May I add one more thing? I just, I know we gave you a bit of a hard time, but I do want to just say thank you. Because you want to come in and you want to put a lot of money. And I don't know that that's something I've seen as the developers or landlords that come here. You said you want to spend a lot of money. You want to get the best tile. You're not saying you want to cut corners, and I find that interesting to hear more about. So I do thank you for that. This is Narsetown, so you're going to, I'm going to ask a lot of questions. And I will continue to ask questions in the process. But I appreciate that you see this as a place of opportunity and investment and not somewhere to get over on. And I hope that you maintain that thought process as we go through it the entire round.
And for the design, there will be the design review board that they will still have to go through as well. Many, many other opportunities.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have some appointments this evening. We have Resolution Number 25-55, request for municipal council to approve appointment to boards, committees, and commissions.
Thank you, Madam President. This is so we can reestablish the Blighted Property Review Committee. And as you can see there, by the code, we're required to have four members, and each of the members have to come from a particular location. We have to have one council member, one person from the zoning here, the planning and zoning here, the planning commission. We have to have one person from the redevelopment authority, and then one person appointed from the executive committee. So we're asking you guys to move forward to approve this so we can establish the Blighted Property Review Committee.
Counsel, any questions?
Yes, before we approve that, I would like to, before we approve that, I would like to nominate Councilman Dustin Queen to take my spot on the Blighted Property Removal Committee. So do I have to make a motion now? So I make a motion to amend and appoint Dustin Queen in?
A second.
All right, is there a, any other questions on Resolution 25-55 before we look for a vote? So there is a motion and a second for the resolution as amended to include Councilman Queen in on the Blighted Property Review Committee. Madam Secretary, could I have a roll call?
Queen McCoy, Madeira Robinson, Dustin Queen, Natalie Coulson, Jasmine Griffin, Rashad Bates, Rebecca Smith.
Yes, have it. Resolution 25-55 is approved as amended.
No, she, she, they amended the motion.
Resolution. Yes. On a Resolution Number 25-59, request for municipal council to approve the appointment of Leonard Leitner as legislative liaison.
Yes, counsel, this is new from the Pennsylvania Municipal League. What they're now doing is wanting to have a liaison to stay abreast to what's going on with General Assembly. So I'm asking you guys for, with, to appoint me as that liaison with PML so we can stay abreast to all the new legislation that's taking place with the General Assembly. With that, also, there is a requirement to keep the, they have a new system they're putting in place. It's called the grassroots system, which our administrative staff can actually maintain that. So what it does, it allows us to track all the new legislation that's coming through. And then we keep you abreast to that, and if there's comments or suggestions, we can upload that into the grassroots system. That way, there's some type of liaison and communication back and forth with the state.
Thank you. Counsel, any questions?
I have one question. So I think it's every year we appoint someone to represent Narsetown to go cast a vote. Is this that or is something totally different?
That's the delegate. That's going to take place in October.
All right. So this is something new they're doing?
This is new. It's starting.
Vice President Bates?
If you're not able to make it, do you, do we appoint someone else to go for you instead, or you just, we just don't go?
It's, it's, I don't think it's requiring us to go. It's, all this is done electronically. So it's not like we have to go there. It's just, it's done electronically. So it's not like we have to go there. It's just, it's done electronically through this grassroots system now. I haven't seen this system. I, they just rolled it out. I haven't received the login yet until if you guys decide to appoint me, then at that point in time, we'll get the login. Like I said, it's brand new. So we're all just hearing about it now.
So what would your responsibility be, just to inform us or what's?
Liaison, that's it.
I did have some questions in regards to the responsibility. I know it's a new program. I tried to look into it too to get a better understanding. But it seems like it's further developing. One of the specific parts, though, in particular, for as far as the, the ways in which you would support as the liaison, is that the liaison is expected to support the league's lobbying efforts. So I wanted to understand, just to make sure that that would be no conflict of interest for us, for you to be active in lobbying?
I don't think it's gonna, we have to clarify that. But we tried, I tried to reach out to find out what that lobbying would be. From my understanding, it goes back to your question as far as the delegate at the annual meeting. That's about the extent of what I got from the information is when we're, when we're listed as delegates at the annual, the, the annual leadership summit, at that point in time, I guess that's when they're going to have those type of discussions. So again, it's brand new. We don't know all the details of that either yet.
Yeah, so two questions to follow. Wondering, one, do we have a deadline on when we need to make this decision? And partly impact to that is I think my next question, because they also outlined that as a liaison, you would have to facilitate any requested local action. And I didn't know if there was clarity on what that local action would look like and what that facilitation might look like.
Don't know. Honestly, I don't know.
Is there a timeline on when we need to make a decision?
There's not even. Yeah, there's not even, there's not even a deadline on this either, what I have.
Is there a particular interest or call to you? I was just wondering, a priority base? I, I think you well researched most things, so in general.
Yeah, my, my thing is, it was, I mean, as far as if you decided to put one, I figured I would do it first, just to kind of work out the kinks, the bugs. Then I have the support staff to help with that. Once we really figure out and they iron out all the kinks, then we can better decide who should be on that. Should it be a council member? Should it be some from, from, someone from the executive team? But right now, there's a lot of unanswered questions. But even to get into the system, they wanted to have an appointment of someone.
We would need a delegate, seems like, to get even more information.
Yeah. So just like you researched it, we, we did the same thing. I reached out to PML, and they're still trying to work through some of those details. And I believe you guys have the same letter I got. I think it was uploaded. It should be in your packet.
I think, just comment, not question, that it's incredibly useful to have a more direct liaison, in, in the true sense of liaison word, like bringing back information to a body like this. Because there is usually like dozens of state bills introduced every single day. Not all of them are relevant to us, but it's hard for one person or one body, we all have other full-time jobs to, to keep track of. And I see the value in having somebody who's a more directly legislative liaison to all of that forthcoming legislation, so we can be more prepared for the things that are coming down the line to affect us. So I think that this would be useful for us to have you in that position.
I will keep you updated step by step. And if it does come to something that's questionable, whether it's lobbying activities or anything like that, I will run it past legal and will, of course, discuss it with you all. If we think there's a better fit for someone else to do it, then by all means, we just, we change it. But again, to get it off the ground, to get it started, I figure, I don't want to take anyone else from the, from the team. And I have the support staff around that we can work on that together.
Council, any other questions? Is there a motion to approve resolution number 25-59 to approve the appointment of Leonard Lightner as legislative liaison? Could I have a roll call, please?
William McCoy.
Aye.
Madeira Robinson.
No.
Dustin Queen in.
Aye.
Natalie Colson.
Aye.
Jasmine Griffin.
No.
Rashad Bates.
Aye.
Rebecca Smith.
Aye. The ayes have it, resolution 25-59 is approved. Sticking with you, Mr. Lightner, resolution number 25-57, request for council to authorize the purchase from Dell Technologies for desktops, laptops, servers to support the municipality's ongoing technology upgrade initiative.
Yes, thank you. This is for critical investment in the municipality's ongoing technology upgrades initiative. Many of our desktops, as you all know, have exceeded their warranty, their manufacturer, they're outdated. So we need to update our computers, our laptops, our servers. And as we do this in upgrading the infrastructure, this improves our speed, our quality, also helps us with our security, cybersecurity. So we're looking to upgrade our services. It's in the budget. This is, also will help reduce downtime. And as we upgrade with our new MSP providers and our new servers, this will help us stay up to date on what's on serving the community.
Council, any questions?
Let me go first then, because they got a lot of questions. Just wondering, how soon will these be active once purchased? Or are they, like, how soon will they be in, in motion? They take a while to build? Are they going to be purchased and immediately available?
They'll be purchased and immediately available. Dell representatives saying we should have them within a couple of weeks.
Just a couple of things. Just a couple of things, I'm ready. First, thank you for the breakdown, because I had a good time going through all of these and figuring out what everything was. So I do think you guys have, excuse me, some really good, some good computers here. My one question was, so you guys have a lot of laptops coming in, really big, 32 gigs of RAM, which seems like a lot. But I'm understanding now that this is going to be for the new life cycle of all the new computers and, and the entire municipality, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So I do like that. And.
And if I could just say on that too, like I say at the beginning, all of our equipment right now, not, everything's out of warranty. So there's nothing in warranty. This will also help us establish our replacement and recycling process, right? So you should, you know, as IT, we need to be on a, a cycle of replacing our equipment.
And, yeah.
Right now, we don't have that. So this will establish that.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Any other questions?
Oh, yeah, then it's me. Okay. All right. Because I see we have briefcases and book bags. Do we currently utilize those? Do we currently have briefcases and book bag? I'm cheap, so I'm, I'm looking for anything that might be, we don't necessarily need. I'd be perfectly honest with you.
So, and you bring up a good question. So with Dell, we currently do not have any type of carrying cases or protectors for if people can their laptops other places. But with Dell, they, it's part of the bundle. So when we took those out, and even the excess keyboards and, and mice, the cost went up. So what Dell is doing is, is part of the bundle, and they're getting rid of some of their last year's equipment. So all of that's part of the bundle.
All right. So when you say part of bundle, because what's confusing me, I guess, is I see a price for it.
Yes.
So usually, you know.
And we have them break it down that way. So we all know what we're spending per item. But when we took it out, the cost of the, the actual hardware and everything went up.
What is, what, what is, what is the ongoing life cycle for replacing computers going to be?
Five years.
Five years. Okay. Because I just know 32 gigs is a lot. And you ain't, you like, it's going to, you ain't running through that.
It is, but you have to look at what we're running from a municipality standpoint. We're showing, we're incorporating new technology that's going to be available for the community. When we talk about GIS, that's that internal mapping system that we're rolling out for the community and for, for you all. We're talking dashboards. Your, every department has multiple software systems. And they're running multiple software systems at the same time. 32 gigs is a lot, but it's sufficient enough for us to grow into for the next five years. We don't know what new, right now, we're looking at a few other software systems we're going to bring in. And we want all these software systems to interconnect. So that way, because right now, we're, as you guys know, we've talked about this, that we're handwriting some things, we have people in the field, we have people back in the office, and we want these systems to connect.
And I understand that systems are everything. And then, and it's just for me, I guess, maybe I, I'm the type of person, I need to see a more clear picture. Like, what is going where and what system is going where? Because I, for example, you got fire and police. I know their systems, they run a lot of stuff on their computers versus not getting on code, where they might be more stationary and more clerical in a sense. So the, the need for certain storage is probably changed with departments you go to. So I'm just saying, is there a savings, you know, if this area doesn't need 62 gigabytes and stuff like that? Or do we need to buy the wireless keyboards and stuff versus maybe another department does need it? I'm just trying to see if there's any wiggle room in there for us to save money here versus over there.
You're talking about a couple of thousand dollars. But when we worked with Dell, again, this is all part of the bundle, it was more cost-effective for us to get the 32 gigs versus the 16.
Then I'm pretty sure we're purchasing this, we're getting some type of discount, like, because I know to get businesses and government.
We get the government rate.
Do you know what that discount may be off the? I know sometimes it's not a lot, but I know like when I saw the business one before, it was 2%, but it adds up.
No, it's not 2%. It's like, it's a, it's a governmental rate. So I don't know what that, that discount is for governmental rate.
Okay. Now, what's going to happen to all our old?
Some of the equipment is just, again, it's out of warranty.
Right.
It's outdated. So that information, those hard drives will be pulled out, and then it go, it'll get recycled. Electronic recycling.
Right. I know we want, are we recycling, I know it's not a lot of money, we're getting money back, or we just recycling and getting rid of it?
It's recycling and getting rid of it.
Only reason I bring that up is because I knew Mr. Bates, if we recycle it, he might, would you take on that project of? You're not allowed to? No, I'm talking about giving it to the community. That's what I was.
Oh, like a partnership to do that?
Yeah. I mean, that's something I would definitely like to look into.
We have to follow the IRS rules for that. So when you say give it.
Well, listen, I'm just a councilman. You guys make sure we don't get sued and stuff like that, so. Okay. Headphones. I saw we're going with Dell's headsets. Is that just because we're going with Dell? Because I know what there's, what Jabra, Logitech, that are known for headsets. Is, we just doing it because we're going with Dell or?
All part of the bundle.
Man, it's expensive bundle. Okay, I see.
We're replacing, we're replacing every computer and laptop and putting it on the, on the cycle. That, to me, when you look at that, I mean, you're in the IT world, and that's, that's a good deal when you're talking about, we're replacing our entire soft, our entire hardware system.
Now, are we rolling that out to make sure, like, just in case there's hiccups that every single department, you know, goes down? Is there a rollout schedule for that?
The schedule's not built yet, but yes, our IT, our, our technology oversight officer is working with our MSP, and they will have a set rollout period.
And one more thing. Basically, I'm at, are you looking at this to do this now because there is money in the budget now? Because I know we didn't budget for it, but we're below budget. Is that one of?
We're doing it now because everything is out of warranty, and we're having computer issues. We're not up to date with our cybersecurity requirements. We have people that are, some of their systems are running slow. We have to get on the cycle. Everything we have is out of warranty.
And now, I do know, like, recently, banks and insurance companies have been targeted, and they've been shut down and things of that nature, so. Okay.
Is it correct that, and maybe I'm reading this wrong, because some of the quantities vary, but in units of like laptops, desktops, machinery-wise, is it 75 units?
Yes.
Okay. And so just kind of look, taking the, and I might be doing that math wrong, but taking the largest number on the bill in total, and then by, divided by that 75, it looks like it's putting us at about just over $1,600 per device, including the bundled accessories. Quick, I'm not advocating for this in some way, but quick Google search and doing that, comparably, a high-end laptop with half of the gig of storage with no accessories was already at about $2,000. So it does seem like there is some cost-effect savings happening in at play.
All right, is there a motion to approve resolution number 25-57 to authorize the purchase of Dell, from Dell Technologies, the amount of $196,414.76 for desktops, laptops, and services to support municipality's ongoing technology upgrade initiative?
Second.
Could I have a roll call, please?
William McCoy.
Aye.
Madeira Robinson.
Aye.
Dustin Queen in.
Aye.
Natalie Colson.
Aye.
Jasmine Griffin.
Aye.
Rashad Bates.
Aye.
Rebecca Smith.
Aye. The ayes have it, resolution 25-57 is approved. To resolution 25-58, request for municipal council to approve the purchase in the amount of $43,701 from Ubiquity Inc. for security system upgrades at the Recreation Center and Fire Chief's Memorial Bandshell.
Again, thank you. This is for our security upgrades and security establishment. This is for, again, the bandshell. As you all know, we had the fire that took place there, and some vandalism had taken place previous times. Also, with the Recreation Center, as you know, we need to make sure with the kids that we have there that we have enough security there. Not too long ago, we had the shooting around there. We have people coming in with guns and things like that. So we want to make sure that, one, with all the different levels within the Recreation, Recreation Center, that we have sufficient security in and around the building, and the same thing for our Fire Memorial Bandshell. These systems, what you're looking at here, we think it's a great, a great deal for the amount of equipment we're receiving, which is $43,701. But it's, it provides us with sufficient coverage in both areas. We have shopped this around. The previous organization that was going to do this, the cost was over $100 and something thousand dollars. When you look at everything that comes with it, we did several quotes. We did some actual visits to make sure that this is the right equipment that serves the purpose.
Council, any questions? Councilwoman Robinson?
Does this additional, excuse me, does this additional equipment require any additional staff in order to oversee it, to execute it, or is this more like security that is passive in some way, that doesn't require an actual security guard or security service?
Very good question. And that's some of the things when we talk about our technology, which goes back to having the 32 gigs of RAM. What we're trying to do is make sure that our systems are all synced. So these cameras will be monitored 24/7 by our PCO office. Some of the things we're trying to do is since we have these different softwares, one soft, one software camera, one set of cameras is operated on this software system, another set of cameras is operated on this set of software. So we're trying to, again, unify all that, so everything can be monitored 24/7 with our PCO office.
I have a question.
Councilman Queen in.
I'm looking at the number of cameras.
Yes.
For, for some, like, just, like, do we know how many cameras we're placing at the bandshell? Because it's over 60 something cameras for two buildings. That's, you know.
It's not just the two buildings. When we say the bandshell, that's the main area, but we're, you have behind the bandshell, back in there, behind the creek, you have all of Elmwood Park to both sides of Elmwood Park. And when you talk about the Recreation Center, you're, we're not just looking at security around just the location, but throughout the park or along Lashaw Field. As you know, we have continuous homeless issues going back and forth through there, and then the back area there. So all of this ties in. So those cameras are going to be placed throughout.
So this is for the whole park and not just the two areas?
No, not just.
Oh, because I ain't going.
Not just the buildings.
I saw this, I was like, okay, for two buildings, I'm like, what is going on?
Two, two buildings, but those are the locations of it. But it will be covering the entire Elmwood, Lashaw, all the way down to Markley.
So the cameras won't just be on those two buildings, they'll be in other sites along the whole thing, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Are we, because I, I know some of these cameras have other functionalities to them. If we have the correct software, we can access them. Are we, because I, I know some of these cameras have other functionalities to them, if we have the correct software, we could access them. Oh, so I guess those particular cameras will be placed at strategic places. Will any of those particular cameras that have these extra functions, high-level functions, will they be placed inside of like the Powell Center or strictly outside?
Some will go inside the Powell Building, yes.
Okay, because, do you know what some of those functions they can do that are included in some of these cameras?
Un, as far as what you mean?
Like, of, of course, we will want license.
Like features, yeah.
Yeah, I'm not worried about that, because I, I just, but their facial recognition software is all, but you can use some of these cameras for that.
And the software, some of those softwares, I mean, the software does have that, but, I mean, if we upgrade that, I mean, we can.
The only reason I, I ask that, it's just if we put that in that particular, you, like, inside, like, outside, I get it if you're looking for people or cause that, but that's where our children would be.
Right.
So, my concern, product concern, are we going to be using that on our own kids? So, and I'd just rather us talk about it now versus someone else in the research series, like, hold on, they're using facial recognition against our own children.
No, the software, most softwares that you get now, they will have that feature there. Um, but until we put policies in place and, and things like that, we, we wouldn't leave, I mean, we wouldn't turn that on yet until we have policies and procedures in place.
Right, so I think that's something we should definitely make sure we have a policy on, how we would use these cameras, so just, you know, until we, just go kidding, gives us the good head, or we discuss a strategy and things of that nature.
For a talk with Mr. Lightner and obviously consult with council.
All right, okay. That was my major concern, like, I'm glad you didn't say two buildings, because I was like, what? Now, thanks for clearing that up for me. And this is cost includes my fault. This is the install price, right? Because I don't think I saw installed on the, the paperwork, so I was like, hold on, what's, what's the installation fee?
I, I just think it might be a good time for public education as we go through this process. Uh, Councilman Queenan did bring up some really good points with what softwares would be active. In knowing that this is going to, in essence, surveil the entirety of the park, there is an implication here that privacy is no longer an option, right? And so, just in, just in being careful about that, we might want to take this time to educate the public about what the expectation of privacy is in that radius, and perhaps what, what is, what in totality, you know, what kind of surveillance is at play? If I walk into a store, I'll give you an example, it's nice to know cameras are active and at use. You can make your own informed decision based around that, but I do think it could be a little off-putting to take your child to a park and not necessarily know, even if you're not doing anything wrong, it could be hard to know, like, oh, are they recording my conversation, are they doing this? And I don't think that we will do any of that, I also think we handle most of this really well, but it does sound like a really good time for some public education around it, and for us to be able to speak about what those policy expect, or the privacy expectations can be in public and municipal spaces.
So, when you're asking about the privacy expectation, our expectation from a community standpoint is that these cameras will be on twenty-four seven. We're going to be, when you talk about recording it, yes, they will be recorded and actively monitored in our PCO office. There's no other feature on there, uh, that we're turning on immediately. When you talk about facial recognition, you're, I mean, some of the cameras, I mean, depending on where they're facing, they could have what we call the LPRs, a license plate reader. But I think some of this stuff is imperative, that we have the ability, that if we do decide to do that, we have the ability to turn it on, having the right policies and procedures. But right now, our concern was more about the vandalism, uh, the destruction that's taken place, but also, uh, just making sure that we're covering inside the Powell Building as well, because you have several different floors within the Powell Building, we're going to make sure that when people are coming in. And with the last incident that happened, um, where I think the gunshots were taking place there, um, those cameras came in handy. We were immediately able to get police there, they were able to really identify the person right away, uh, but we're not looking to do anything more than that right now. I hope I answered your question.
You, you didn't, only in the sense that I are, I believed you on all of that, so I didn't mean for you to take in the, to this expectation that I believe that those were within our things. And then, what I meant by public expectation of policy is that to the public, perhaps we can just name, that it'd be nice to put some signs up, so they can also be aware that the surveillance is happening twenty-four hours a day in this, in this area, so that there is an awareness that the expectation is the same on both sides. We know that we're going to do it, they know it's happening, so that no one is caught off guard, so that, that was my.
Absolutely, I mean, if, yeah, absolutely, we could do that, absolutely.
I have a question. Um, going back to Councilman Queenan's, um, response, like, question regarding the facial recognition, I know that often, I don't know how this software is, but facial recognition relies heavily on AI. And I do think, like, if you guys do decide to turn it on, or I do think it would be smart for us to come up with some sort of policy regarding that, because in everyday life, you're always asked anyway, like, do you agree to this and things like that? And then going back to Councilwoman, um, Robinson's point about signs, too, I just do think it should be thought about a little deeper when it is a camera that contains the capability to do it, not saying you're going to turn it on, but just because it does contain that capability. And understanding that even though it might not be on now, would we be notified if it would be turned on as well? That's more so, um, where I'm at. I understand the need for surveillance, don't get me wrong, but I just want to make sure we're being diligent in, um, letting the public know and understanding fears surrounding it.
Council, is there a motion to approve Resolution twenty-five dash fifty-eight to approve the purchase in the amount of forty-three thousand seven hundred and one dollars from Ubiquity Inc. for security system upgrades at the Recreation Center and Fire Chief's Memorial Band Shell?
Second.
Could I have a roll call, please?
William McCoy? Madeira Robinson?
Aye.
Dustin Queenan?
Aye.
Natalie Colson? Jasmine Griffin?
Aye.
Rashad Bates?
Aye.
Rebecca Smith?
Aye, the ayes have it, Resolution twenty-five dash fifty-eight is approved. Resolution twenty-five dash sixty, request for municipal council to approve, to extend due diligence period for the state hospital project.
Yes, thank you, this is for us to extend the due diligence period for the state hospital project. The extension is necessary to allow us to continue on working with the partner of the municipalities and the staff, the redevelopment authority. As you know, we're going through some complexities in the transfer over, so we need to extend this. The original, the, the extension expired May sixteenth, twenty twenty-five, so we're just looking to extend it until we get through the final, uh, process with this. As you know, they were, right now, they're in the process of working with the Stormwater, not Stormwater, the Wastewater Authority, so we, we need to give them a little bit more time to get through that process.
Council, any questions?
Do we know about how much time they need, or is this a, a, like, a living, breathing?
Don't know how much time, we're still going through that process.
I mean, I expect some hiccups inside to this, not necessarily a hiccup, but there's going to be related to size of this project.
I, I can tell you that the developer, is Jane here? Oh, she just stepped out. I know the developer, we just had a conversation with him just the other day, he's anxious to get this going and wanting to get this finalized. I know the redevelopment authority is ready to get this deal signed and closed. So, right now, we're, we're constantly on it, pushing it through, but I can't give you, like, how long that's going to take, because you're going through all these different legal reviews and stuff, but the intent is to get it done, hopefully by the end of the year, to get this agreement settled on.
Is there language that has to be put to name that there is a varying deadline? Like, how, how would that then be said if we're not, if we're not adding a date to it?
If you want, you can add a date, you can add to the, if you want to extend it to the end of the year or the first of the year, I mean, do you guys have that?
Is there a recommendation?
Yeah, um, yeah, why don't we do December thirty-first, twenty twenty-five, and then if there's progress and it needs to be extended again, we could always do that, but it gives a timeframe.
It expired May sixteenth, twenty twenty-five.
But this would extend it to the end of the year?
Yeah.
So, is.
I actually, just to be clear, I recuse myself at the Redevelopment Authority of All Norristown Matters because of my role here, so I'm not in the know, I actually leave the room.
Um, so is there a motion to amend Resolution twenty-five dash sixty to include, um, an extension deadline of December thirty-first, twenty twenty-five, and then to approve the due diligence period for the state hospital project until December thirty-first, twenty twenty-five?
So moved.
Second.
Could I have a roll call, please?
William McCoy?
Aye.
Madeira Robinson?
Aye.
Dustin Queenan?
Aye.
Natalie Colson? Jasmine Griffin?
Aye.
Rashad Bates? Rebecca Smith?
Sixty is approved. Resolution twenty-five dash sixty-one, request for municipal council to approve the amended resolution authorizing purchase in the amount of ninety-eight thousand six hundred and seventeen dollars from Integrated Technical Systems for ten T-two digital payment Cosmo pay stations, amending Resolution twenty-five dash zero six.
Thank you, this resolution was approved before for ten pay station. What we're looking at when those pay stations were ordered, uh, don't have the exact date, but it was early January. As we discussed, the pay stations were ordered and set for only accepting one type of payment. Um, after further discussion, we decided we needed to upgrade that to allow for multiple mobile devices in order to use the pay station, but also to allow for compliance, to allow people to pay with credit card or cash. We had limited ourselves at the beginning to only accept one form of payment, so the price has gone up because it was back in January, but also we're adding multiple options for people to pay, but that's why you have the increase in the cost. We're asking you to approve that, uh, so that way it allows people to be in compliance. We don't want to have people go to a pay station and only have one way to pay, they should have multiple options to pay.
Council, any questions?
Yeah, just to be clear, on the, um, resolution that was approved in early January, you said for, uh, they were. This year, just to, just so that I'm clear, that was, purchase was approved but not made?
Correct.
And so, this is then the making of this purchase with a price increase?
Yes.
For upgrade of equipment?
Right.
Okay.
Those pay stations have just been sitting at the manufacturer.
And we're not being charged any type of holding?
No.
Restocking fee?
No.
Nothing like that?
They were never delivered, they were sitting there, uh, so this price, what you're seeing, is for those ten pay stations upgraded and delivered.
Is there an additional cost to install them or service?
We do the installation. We do the installation, and that's the other thing that we had requested with these pay stations. It now allows for us, our parking enforcement officers, to actually do the maintenance on it now. Um, so it's simpler, uh, you pull a couple of pieces out, they can dust it off with their, their, their cleaning equipment, so it just makes it a lot more easier for maintenance, and then our Public Works will do the installation.
And you may not know this, you, you may or may not, but is there a life on, a life cycle on these type of units that sit outside? Like, is there a frequency when we might have to replace these?
Uh, I'd check with our parking consultant, but I know that some of them are at least fifteen to twenty years, so, but I'll double-check with them.
Council, is there a motion to approve Resolution twenty-five dash sixty-one?
So moved.
Um, Madam Secretary, can I have a roll call, please?
William McCoy? Madeira Robinson?
Aye.
Dustin Queenan?
Aye.
Natalie Colson?
Aye.
Jasmine Griffin?
Aye.
Rashad Bates?
Aye.
Rebecca Smith?
Aye, the ayes have it, Resolution Number twenty-five dash sixty-one is approved. Ordinance Number twenty-five dash zero five, motion to advertise amending Chapter two seventy-eight, Article two, Sections two seventy-eight dash nine, sidewalk sales, and two seventy-eight dash twenty-three violations and penalties of the Norristown Municipal Code.
Yes, Council, we're asking you to, um, allow us to advertise this, this is a change in the code for sidewalk sales. Uh, this is updated to modernize and clarify regulations governing sidewalk sales. And of course, strengthen our enforcement, look at it as a non-traffic citation for code violations, uh, and the intent is to better support the small businesses, uh, not to allow different businesses to set up shop in front of another business. So, we're looking to clarify that, also look to put it in the right departments in order to maintain and enforce this ordinance.
Council, any questions? Is there a motion to advertise Ordinance twenty-five dash zero five?
So moved.
Second.
Could I have a roll call, please?
William McCoy? Madeira Robinson?
Aye.
Dustin Queenan?
Aye.
Natalie Colson? Jasmine Griffin?
Aye.
Rashad Bates?
Aye.
Rebecca Smith?
Aye, the ayes have it. Ordinance Number twenty-five dash zero six, motion to advertise amending Chapter two twenty-five, titled Parks and Recreation Areas to Add Additional Park Prohibitions in Municipal Parks and Authorize the Adoption of Policies and Procedures, Procedures for the Same.
Yes, again, we're asking you to allow us to, um, post this out. The purpose of this ordinance is to add specific prohibitions for addressing ongoing safety, cleanliness, and quality of life concerns within our parks, such as unauthorized vehicles, vandalism, disruptive behavior. Uh, additionally, this ordinance authorizes us to adopt a more formal policy and procedures to help manage our parks, and also more effectively and consistently, consistently. Also with this, it allows us to formally make considerations, uh, for those that may be occupying space within the parks, and allow us to take formal actions in our policies in order to have those people that are actually in the parks to be displaced appropriately.
Council, any questions? Is there a motion to advertise Ordinance twenty-five dash zero six?
So moved.
Second.
Could I have a roll call, please?
William McCoy? Madeira Robinson?
Aye.
Dustin Queenan?
Aye.
Natalie Colson?
Aye.
Jasmine Griffin?
Aye.
Rashad Bates?
Aye.
Rebecca Smith?
Aye, the ayes have it. I'm onto buildings and code compliance, uh, the request of approval for the Harb COAs.
Good evening, President Smith, members of council. As you know, the Historic Review Board meets monthly to review all requests for additions, alterations, and repairs on exteriors of properties in the historic district. The following COAs have been reviewed and recommended for approval by the Harb and are being presented to you tonight for consideration, twenty-seventh West Ari Street and six-eleven West Marshall Street.
Council, any questions? Seeing none, is there a motion to approve the Harb COAs?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
They're approved, thank you. Um, next up, we have Public Works, Resolution twenty-five dash fifty-six, the award of the contract to the Newbo Group for repair work needed on the Norristown Recreation Center restrooms, male and female, in the amount of eighty-six thousand eight hundred and one dollars.
Good evening, council, this is, I'm asking the council to approve the sum of eighty-six thousand eight hundred dollars for repair work that have been done on the toilets, the, both the female and male toilets in the rec center. They were damaged when we had the last tour, so since then, they've been using portable toilets. And it's costing us about twelve thousand a month, so this will actually be a very good investment.
So, we're currently using portable? I'm sorry.
Yeah, portable, yeah. And it's costing us about twelve thousand a month, yeah.
Question for you, i- is this including showers?
Yes.
Okay, because, all right, and this is showers in the, the boys' room and the girls' room?
I do not believe, I do not believe that there are showers in the guest bathroom, that there's one in the boys' that I know.
There's one in the boys', okay. One thing I didn't understand, and I'm pretty sure it could just be me, when I saw the quotes, they both says supply and install. I guess they broke them down, I guess the third part of quote is the supplies they need? Because I was confused, I saw some supplies in the other quotes, um, when they broke it down, because it was like it was broken down in three segments.
Yeah, yeah, three.
Boys, girls, then supplies. Okay, so, I guess that, I'm just assuming the third supplies is not including anything from the other two quotes? These are additional supplies?
No, this is, the, the supply you see there, that what it means that they are going to supply and install everything that is going to be used.
Right, and, and, and the reason why we're going with tile is because, what, we're trying to do mold?
I, I asked, um, Public Works to actually do tile, because if it does. I, I ask Public Works to actually do tile, because if it does flood again, tile you can wipe off, or if you put drywall, you got to rip it all out again, so we're putting the tile up to six, four feet.
As a matter of fact, he put it for six feet, but he said that if I wanted to go up to the ceiling, he'll go up to the ceiling, at no, no additional cost.
Okay. So if it does flood again, it's easier to just clean that instead of ripping all the drywall out.
And the floors are all tiled too, right?
Floors are tiled.
They floor are tiled too.
Well, they should be happy if y'all, because I'm cheap, I threw down some cement, threw some epoxy over it, but it'll probably look better the way you guys do it.
Yeah, we could put concrete, might be more expensive.
Right. So, that was interesting.
I, I actually, Mr. Lightner, I saw a lot of this, Larry, this is not, you're not like demoing, you're redoing, like, the layout, but this is a rebuild of the bathrooms as they already exist. Did you mention one having a shower versus one not? This is how it is already currently laid out, and then so essentially you're repairing the layout that is already in existence.
Yes.
Thank you.
Counsel, is there a motion to approve Resolution 25-56 to award the contract to the Newbo Group for repair work needed on the Recreation Center restrooms?
So moved.
Could I have a roll call, please?
William McCoy.
Aye.
Madeira Robinson.
Aye.
Dustin Queenan.
Aye.
Natalie Coulson.
Aye.
Jasmine Griffin.
Aye.
Rashad Bates.
Aye.
Rebecca Smith.
Aye, the ayes have it, Resolution 25-56 is approved. Thank you. Next up, we have our departmental reports presenting this evening, we have police.
Good evening, Madam President, Counsel. So, last time I was here, we gave a, a report that wasn't so great, so we were up a total of 50% across the board for Part I crimes. Okay, today, we are down 1% overall. That's including the, the spike in crime that we had in the beginning of the year. That includes, there was a 500% increase in robberies, 100% increase in aggravated assaults, 100% increase in burglaries across the board. Just this month alone, we're looking at a 45% decrease in those numbers. So some finally, some good news. Moving into our shots fired, starting out in the beginning of the year, we experienced 14 incidents on average, 22 in January, though. We are now averaging, for the month of June, zero. Okay, so we've actually cut that down to zero. We did have five in the month of May and seven in the month of April. So the problem isn't completely gone, but we're, we have significant progress. Moving to overall, the numbers that are impacting us at this time continue to be theft of motor vehicle, okay? We are up 25% for the year, but if you take in the, the spike in the beginning of the year, we will actually be down to 5%. So as the numbers right now reflect the spike in the beginning of the year, we're going to be down probably about 5% for a theft of motor vehicles. We are down 46% in burglaries. Aggravated assaults are up 18%. We did have two shootings in the month of June. Both of those shootings were of known individuals that were targeted, so this isn't random acts of violence, these were two individuals that were fighting with each other. Apart from that... So our goals for the year that we stated back in January, as I stated, we had two shootings, okay, but for the month of June, we had 100% decrease, we've had zero robberies so far. Okay, for the month of June, there were 46 domestic-related incidents, it's a 13% decrease, that's goal number two. Our opioid efforts remain a constant, it's a constant battle. We have noticed an increase in fatalities and in overdoses as we move into the summer months, it's an increase of 29%. We are increasing our hosted events, okay? We have completed 16 already, and we have many more that are actually scheduled, we're going to be placing that on social media as we move forward. And that is what I have. Any questions?
Thank you, I like hearing numbers are going down.
Me too.
Yeah, me too.
Thank you. And Chief O'Donnell, fire.
Good evening, Madam President, members of council. Your operational summary for the Fire Department, year-to-date, 775 emergency incidents, our average response time is 4 minutes and 16 seconds. Our busiest day is Saturday at noon. Department training classes, we held 866 of those, which equate to 4,120 hours of training. We've had no firefighter injuries for the year, luckily no civilian casualties for the year, and we only had three civilian injuries for the year. So far, staff this year has inspected 293 commercial properties, held 101 public events, conducted two fire drills so far this year, visited 288 homes, and installed 90 smoke detectors in those homes. Fire safety house events for the year are one. And our fleet out-of-service time so far this year is 2,147, which is a sign of aging fleet, but we have a plan and place to deal with that, right? So as our, your fleet comes in, we decommission the older stuff and kind of get that out of service, so we don't have to deal with that, but, that's the only thing I have.
Any questions?
I have a comment, just for both of you guys, Angela and you, O'Donnell, just the Fourth of July, like, you guys are just not there working, like, you're part of the community, especially O'Donnell, I saw you repping around, taking care of people, laughing and up, having a good time, and that's what Norristown's about, but you guys have been part of Norristown for forever, not saying you're old, because I'm old, and I just wanted to let you guys know, we appreciate that, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned.